Particularly in professional spheres affects how we view the features that they bring into language and affects how we see them as contributors to English. So it's unfortunate for women that they happen to be both culturally not well-accepted in certain places, but also innovators in language. So they get more noticed for that as well.
A notable exception, though, to all of this is the word dude, made famous in films like Bill and Ted's Excellent Adventure and The Big Lebowski. Here in that film, Jeff Bridges and Sam Elliott.
Take it easy, dude. Oh, yeah. I know that you will.
Yeah, well, the dude abides.
The dude abides. You do the history of so many of these words. The word duty? Actually, what led us to dude? Explain.
Yes, can you imagine if instead of calling each other dude, our adolescent children called each other duty? I don't think they'd be quite so popular. The funny part about dude is it actually comes from Yankee doodle dandy. It's a fusing together of the doodle and the dandy. And it seemed to have first started surfacing as duty that then got shortened to dude.
I just want to spend a minute on the singular they to describe someone identifying as non-binary. Now, this isn't about whether or not there should be a word for people who are non-binary. You all for that, but it's a discussion of which word is chosen, and many were tried before they.
Hundreds were tried before they, and I think people don't realize that. The reason they has been successful is it was an organic development in language. And we find, if we look back through the history of language, that it's almost always an organic development that leads to new words being adopted. It's sort of like Klingon. You can't just enforce it and say, everybody should speak Klingon. It's not going to happen. You need to have something that users themselves create because it meets the needs that they have. And that seems to be what they has done. It has done it when it was part of the worthiness doctrine in the 1600s that he was supreme and more worthy than she. People started to say, okay, well, that's okay if you want to think that, but I feel invisible, and I want to use they instead of he because I feel I should be seen in this language. They had those discussions as early as 1600. It's now sort of shift in who we're referring to with they, but it's the same underlying motivation of why people have adopted a pronoun that already existed in the language. And I think what we forget is that you has changed drastically over the history of English. And you used to refer to plural only and only in object position. And now it can be singular or plural and in subject position. And that happened organically as well. So we can't force language. It has to evolve on its own. And sticking in weird words that we don't recognize or feel any empathy with is not going to ever be the organic development of language that they has become.
That's Valerie Friedland, a professor of linguistics at the University of Nevada. She also writes a language blog on Psychology Today, Language in the Wild. Her book is Like Literally Dude: Arguing for the Good in Bad English. Valerie, thanks so much.
Absolutely. Later, dude, I think is the only appropriate way to go off.
And with this, a critic once said, "My voice sounded like puppies tumbling over each other. It was not a compliment." It's Here and Now.
Malaria kills 600,000 people a year. Now groundbreaking vaccines could save lives across Sub-Saharan Africa. We visit one community in Kenya that's been using a WHO-approved shot to learn about the potential and the remaining hurdles of malaria vaccines. Next time on The World.
You can hear The World Monday through Thursday at 3 on Radio IQ. Support for Radio IQ comes from A N Culbertson &amp; Company, independent wealth managers helping clients protect, grow, and manage their family's wealth since 1993. Fee-only advisors, Charlottesville, anculbertson.com.
I'm Michelle Martin with NPR. Public media giving days are coming up. It's a time to advocate on behalf of this station. One way to help, donate a vehicle you no longer need. It's free to you and could be worth hundreds of dollars in support. And thank you.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston, where the program is produced, and your NPR station. From MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and Simulink software for technical computing and model-based design, MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And Made In cookware. Made In cookware is crafted by chefs for use in restaurants and home kitchens around the world. Their cookware can be found at madeincookware.com.
It's Here and Now. With healthcare costs rising, several states want to expand their public insurance programs. In Minnesota, it's Minnesota Care was originally meant for low-income residents. But Democratic lawmakers who control both state houses and the governor's mansion want to let any Minnesotan at any income level buy in. In the lingo, this is called the health insurance public option that could cover 300,000 uninsured persons. What does this healthcare struggle look like? But with us now is Cindy Vanderpoel. She runs the Pastures Ab plenty farm in Kirkhope in Minnesota, and she has been on the Minnesota Care program. Cindy, welcome to Here and Now.
Thank you for having me.
I understand you testified last month before the Minnesota Legislature on this proposal to expand the Minnesota Care system. What did you tell lawmakers about your story, your financial situation?
Well, every year we deal with, you know, trying to figure out how to afford healthcare, either through Minnesota Care or by ourselves. And every year, we have the struggle of looking at our taxes, and the taxes look good. We have an income. But when the bottom line comes down to it, you know, the checkbook doesn't show the same income, so.
We know harvest vary year to year, and you have been on and off the Minnesota Care program over the years. You're currently on it. And two years ago, you had a breast cancer tumor removed, and you're on your way to a follow-up. So first of all, we wish you the best. As far as your insurance coverage for these treatments, what's the math been as far as your out-of-pocket costs?
So we've been very fortunate. We were actually on Minnesota Care due to the pandemic. Found out that I had breast cancer in May of 2021. With all my treatments, in between 33 rounds of radiation and two surgeries, our medical bills were about $100,000. And of that, we paid out probably about $20,000. And the health insurance paid the rest of it. And so we were very fortunate because in farming, every dollar counts, and $100,000 would have been a lot to have had to pay out of pocket.
And yet you still paid $20,000 out of pocket, I guess as a percentage of your income. Or how easy or hard was that to pay?
Well, you know, you just you just made the payments, and you changed what you did with your life. You didn't go out for a nice treat on a date night or something and maybe not get the haircut as often as you usually did.
Do you talk to other farmers nearby about the cost of healthcare? Curious if you know what choices, what tough choices they're making?
Well, some people aren't as fortunate as we are to be on Minnesota Care. We don't know, you know, now that that window of pandemic is closing, now we're looking at, okay, so what are we going to have to be paying out for healthcare? Is it going to be $1,400 a month? Or what will that be? What new cuts are we going to have to make in our daily life?
So for you, is that the possibility that, you know, after this declaration of the pandemic emergency ends, that that could be your situation, $1,400 a month?
Last time that we looked into it to get good healthcare through the Minnesota Care system, it was still going to be at least $1,400 a month for us. And that was with a very high deductible.
How does that sound to you? How easy or hard would that be?
Well, it'll be a struggle to try to pay for something like that. And we'll have to maybe rethink what we do take home from the farm or from our business. You know, we have been told by different people, well, why don't you go get yourself a real job instead of doing what you do? You know, go get a job that has healthcare.
I've been through cancer treatments and follow-ups and terrified when going up for a follow-up. When you add on...
Do you care to join me as we stand for a moment of silence or a personal prayer and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for April 25, 2023. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 p.m. Public hearings are held at 7:00 p.m. on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from the schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV Channel 3 and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 p.m. and on Sunday from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanockcountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn off all cell phones or place on silent. Item I is opening ceremonies. Number one, roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Peters?
In case you couldn't see me, I'm here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here. Item B, request to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda items. Does any board member have any changes? Fellow board members, I do have one change. I'm going to add a following as item B1, recognition and signing of the memorandum of understanding between Roanoke County Board of Supervisors and the Roanoke County School Board regarding joint capital funding. Are there any objections? Mr. Haywood, any changes?
No changes.
Mr. Lubek?
No changes, Madam Chair.
So item one, recognition and signing of the memorandum of understanding between the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors and the Roanoke County School Board regarding joint capital funding. And I'll be bringing this forward with just a few comments and recognitions. At our last Board of Supervisors meeting, my fellow board members and I approved a memorandum of understanding that outlines a record funding proposal for our school system. The proposal will provide Roanoke County Public Schools $130 million to fund a new career and technical education center and much-needed improvements to two elementary schools. I'm very happy today and take this moment to acknowledge that the school board approved this memo of understanding at their board meeting last week. This is the largest amount of funding the county has ever offered to Roanoke County Public Schools and enables them to complete all three projects sooner than what they had expected. We've paved the way for them to advance these critical capital projects and ensure the educational needs of our students are met. Thank you to our school board members for working alongside us to get this done. While there have been ongoing healthy debates about the financing of these projects, I know both boards are passionate about our schools and the future success of our children. I'm also appreciative of Dr. Nicely and his staff for their hard work, pulling together information and meeting with our staff to help understand the school system's needs. I'd like to thank our county staff that worked diligently with us for many months to find solutions within our current and future funding streams that would allow us to continue meeting the capital needs of all county programs and remain fiscally responsible with our taxpayers' dollars. Specifically, our county administrator, Richard Haywood, deputy county administrator Rebecca Owens, finance director Laurie Gerhart and her staff, and county attorney Peter Lubek. I'd also like to recognize the CTE Citizen Advisory Committee and staff who worked more than a year to research, advise, and make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors and school board regarding the construction of a new CTE center. And several of them were able to join us today. Mike Altizer and Wayne Bauer and county staff who worked with the committee, Alex Jones, Cecilia Thomas, and staff from Roanoke County Schools, Jason Sur, Mark Jones. We're happy to have you all here. And finally, thank you to my fellow board members. I'm really proud of our work together to make this happen for our schools. I'm going to take just a quick minute to see if my fellow board members care to have any comments. And then there are some others that may want to speak also. So to my board members, Mr. Peters, any comment?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. I too have been excited about this for a very long time. I know I've had a lunching with Don Butzer and Tim Greenway probably three, four years ago when we started talking about the CTE. I've shared with many in the audience and my fellow board that I've seen for a very long time the need for a CTE to provide skilled labor within our valley. I see business owners daily who are struggling to find the proper skilled labor to so they can provide the services to our citizens. And I've long understood the need to get this done. I also have a W-100 in my district. As I shared, I think at the last meeting, I went there as Hardy Road Elementary. And I know the challenge of having the open classrooms. So I'm glad to see that we finally all came together to make this work. The CTE I'm especially proud of because I do realize the need that's within our valley. If we plan to bring other businesses and expand the current businesses here, we need to make sure we have a way to create a strong workforce. And then the last thing I want to say is to the CTE Committee, to Mike Altizer and everyone and Wayne Bauer who's here today, I want to thank each and one of you. I know that as chairman in '21, I gave you the task of figuring all this out. And some would say it was time wasted. I completely disagree. I think with the time and expertise that you spent going around, looking at different schools, seeing the need, talking to our school board, talking to our school officials, understanding what we needed in our schools, and what the CTE project looks like, I want to thank you personally for that because I think it's, there's not a value I can place on that. And then there was calls to even lower this, make the scale of this project smaller, which I didn't support and I don't support because, again, I understand, again, as someone who's in the public daily dealing with our business community, that we are desperate for skilled labor on the streets as these kids are rolling out of school, and that college isn't the only way for them to go. And anyway, I look forward to seeing this building erected, and I'm looking forward to seeing the kids that are currently being turned away, that they will have a place to get that, those skills needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Mr. Mahoney?
Just want to thank the school board. I want to thank the Citizens Committee. I'm optimistic that this step will jumpstart the construction of this new facility, which is sorely needed. So I want to thank everyone involved, and let's build this building. I'm looking at Mr. Sur. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, Mr. North?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I love history, so I'm going to give a brief summary of how some of these things came about. In 2019, when I was a anointed chair, we began working with Chairman Butzer at that time on increasing funding from $10 to $12 million, which was a big quantum leap for Roanoke County to do, having kept $10 million in place for many, many years as far as borrowing capacity for the schools and the county. So we did that. We got the $12 million in December of that year. The CTE was under study at that time and hadn't been completed until there was a study book that came out, I think in January, when Chairman Radford was leading us in 2020. And then about February or March, COVID hit and everything got put on ice, if I recall. And so it wasn't until '22 that the schools and the county began working on, how can we do this? And we considered going to 17. In fact, we'd gone to $17 million borrowing somewhere in between that timeframe. I think it was in the '21 year. Now, the interest that this board had on CTE was curious enough that Chairman Hooker and I went to Harrisonburg on a recommendation of someone from Senator Kane's office to see a regional school. And we were so impressed with that that on the way back, you know, we had a, we talked the whole way back. I don't think we, because we were excited with what we saw and how that was impacting that community. So, you know, these dialogues on both boards and also with the committee when it was formed, just kind of fueled this whole process. Now, in terms of government responding in a quick manner, I think we did a pretty good job, and here's why. In '22, or excuse me, '21, Chairman Peters calls me one day in March or April, in the middle of the winter, saying, how are we going to address the CTE thing? And we went over the history of it. And I said, well, I said, here's an idea. And I said, why don't you form a committee? That's what we do at church all the time when we have capital projects. And we did just that. And he took that idea, and we formed the CTE Committee under his leadership. And with that said, the wheels began to move on this ever closer. Now, if you discount the 2019 and the 2020 and 2021 timeframe because of COVID, we really got this done in about two years. Now, that's fast in terms of government work. That's almost as fast as private industry and corporations move to try to develop big projects. So I got to tell you what, it kind of humbled me because normally, government doesn't move this quickly in terms of getting things done, both the federal, state, and many times local. But we, I think, took a quantum leap. And the school board, the committee, and the Board of Supervisors, I know are proud of how this all came about in a timely fashion, if I might not say so myself. And it's not over with yet because there's other things going on where we've tried to get state help, and that's going to continue on into next year's General Assembly. Because we're persistent, and we don't take no for an answer, and we make the people aware in Richmond and other parts of the state what our needs are. And if they can have these needs east of us, we're going to have them west of us, whether it's schools or whether it's transportation. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Radford?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, we all played different parts in the CTE and the two elementary schools coming together today. And I do see it as a monumental day. So prior to COVID, Mr. North and I made a trip down to South Carolina to actually look at schools that had new technology, had different energy methods to it, solar panels. And we were just, you know, my whole perspective of looking at those schools down there was to find a way to use tax credits, federal loans, zero-interest loans, so we could build three of them at the same time, the CTE and the elementary schools. You know, and we went back and forth with a certain vendor, not a vendor, just a resource, to try to figure out, you know, how we could do that here in Roanoke County. And I think after we, you know, did a lot of back and forth, and we heard from the CTE Committee and their recommendations, after we finally pared it down to the construction numbers, broad construction numbers, you know, I really believe, trying to convince the four of us, the five of us, to, we needed to accelerate the borrowing and accelerate the building. And I think that that really helped kind of pull us together pretty quick with the with the school board and their willingness to look at the scope. So we had different things going on that kind of brought it together here recently. And, you know, I'm just glad we're finally here today, you know, to celebrate that and sign the MOU and move on. And I agree, whoever said it, I'm ready to, ready for the building to get going. Because that's, construction's in my blood. I'm ready. There you go. Thank you, Madam Chair. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Radford. And I'll just make a couple of real quick comments. And that is that I'm a retired teacher. I really believe in the educational process that Roanoke County Schools provide. What a great resource for our community. And to look at those elementary schools, those teachers that have worked diligently in less-than-ideal circumstances have been rock stars. They have been amazing with what they have done. Our students have been incredibly resilient in that when you look at test scores, there's not a lot of significant difference between any of our schools. And it just is amazing. I think it speaks volumes about the quality of our teachers and the environment of our schools. Mr. Kish, I think we overlooked you when you came in, but thank you for being here, principal of the Burton Center. And this is, this really is a great day. My heart is with CTE and what it provides to this community and the opportunities it's giving our students in the trades. And some incredible work is being done there. And so we're, we are all unified in this idea that this must go on, and it must go on quickly. And we're proud of the work that's been done here today. So with that being said, Mr. London from the school board, if you would like to come forward and say anything, we'd welcome your comments if you care to make any comments. I hope someone said something to you about this before now.
I put you on the spot.
Not too long ago, but I did get a little heads up.
Five minutes, anyway.
Just here, I want to say thank you. And as Madam Chair mentioned, we did approve the MOU unanimously at our school board meeting last Thursday evening. And it's a historic time for us. We're so excited to be able to not only get the CTE center underway, but you guys recognize the need for the two elementary schools to be done. And it's even sooner than we anticipated. So to be able to get those going quickly is something, when we moved them down on the, on our CIP last year, it wasn't because we didn't think they were important. It was to hope that we could get some... It was to hope that we could get some state grants and some additional funding for that CTE Center. But we're, we're beyond thrilled to be able to move forward as quickly as we can. And just want to say thank you. Thank you for, I know you've done this. Taxpayers, not only do they, they've, they get to see a, a little decrease in real estate taxes and we get to move forward with this. So thank you to the, the committee as well. We can't say, that citizens cannot come and say, we didn't do our homework on this. Between the efforts that you guys put in and that, that the committee put in, we know we've done the, the homework necessary and we're just so excited to, to get this thing rolling. So on behalf of the schools, thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it. And then Mr. Mike Altizer, if you would come forward too. And we would just like to express our appreciation to you for all the work and time, energy that you spent with this committee. And it's our understanding you'd like to say a few words.
I'll, I'll try to keep you to a few words. I promise.
Three minutes.
I know the light.
He'll never make it.
Well, number one, I'd like to thank the committee. Not everyone's here today, of course. Mr. Bowers is here for the hard and diligent work that everybody did on that. Did we agree on everything going through? Absolutely not. But we did all come to a consensus of what we did wholeheartedly agree on. We needed a facility. And I think we found the best place available that we could do that. And now with y'all's hard work and being able to expedite this construction schedule and the school board, it's going to get built bigger. And, and what I'd like, what I'd like to say today, because I, I've seen them in the TV news when there's been things I talked about at newspaper. It's always mentioned, this is the biggest project that Roanoke County has ever done, which goes to money and all like that. And one, one thing I, I want to, to happen is for everybody to understand, it's the outcome of this building. It's what's going to be the most noteworthy accomplishment, irregardless if we're doing 130 million, 80 million, or 20 million. To be able to train the next group of workforce for future businesses when they come in here and they ask that question. We all know, they come in here, they want to know the quality of our schools and they want to know, do we have people that can do this work? And I think we're, will better do that. And, and I think that is, that is the biggest thing about this project. This money, you got to have it, you got to pay for it. But, but setting that aside, with what this will do for businesses, business investment. And the other part of this is the apprentice program. A lot of people know that what I've been involved with that. I love that program. But, but here's what we have. At the end of every year, we end up having apprentices that don't get offered a job or there's not enough openings in the business participating. This facility will help to facilitate that. There are businesses out there now that really don't have the space or the time to train and do the training that they need. Well, guess what? They can pay. We can have training at this facility, which we really can't do very productively now. So we can do things to help business. Business can do things to help us. And there's new ways, all of y'all spoke about going at one time or another to maybe Harrisonburg and down to South Carolina and things like that. Well, at, at, at Harrisonburg, at Massanutten, you know, the things that they do up there, that they, they build a house, they auction it off, they raise money for the school and, and the money stays in that school. They, they have a cafeteria there that they have their students that's working in and, and doing things like that. People can come in, they can eat, you can raise revenues that way. So this just opens up many opportunities. This is, this is just the beginning of something far more greater than the investment. And the return on that will, will be very meaningful. And for that, I think all the citizens of Roanoke County need to thank this board and the school board for bringing this forward, getting it started earlier and being able to do the things that needs to be done. So thank y'all again for everything that y'all have done. It's been up and down, up and down, as Mr. North said. You know, in government, it takes a little while sometimes. This one, okay. And then there's always back and forth. But at the end of the day, the results show when people are committed and that they know what's right and they get down and they do it. So for that, and I'll speak on behalf of the committee also to thank you for everything that y'all did and all the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Altizer. So at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Kaywood to come forward to the podium and I'll meet him down there. Our side will sign this memorandum of understanding. And then it's my understanding that we're going to have some pictures. And, and I would like any members of the school staff, the school board, anyone from the CTE Committee that would be willing to come forward to be in those pictures after the signing, please join us for pictures. This whole board may want to come down and join us too. This is a big, a big moment. So Richard, or do you have your?
Ready to go with that? Do you have a pen?
Are we going to use about a dozen pens like the president does?
No, we're down to the last one.
Clerk informs me it's very important that we sign in the appropriate places. So I'd like you to go first and there's yours.
That way you won't mess up.
That way I won't mess up.
And there are two copies.
Do we sign both?
Was there, was there a witness notary on there? Open it up.
Good, 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 good deal. He didn't, he didn't bend over when he, when he took it because of that weight. Yeah, get over here. Get, get over here. Then you get over here. You get on the other side right here. You get on here on the other side. Take a deep breath and hold it. Thank you.
What happened to my paper? Okay. Just making sure we get one back.
So, let's see. Item C, public hearing. Public hearing for citizen comments on the proposed fiscal year 2023-2024 operating budget and the proposed fiscal year 2024-2033 capital improvement program. Mr. Steve Elliott, Budget Administrator, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This item is to conduct a public hearing for citizen comment on the proposed fiscal year 2023-2024 operating budget and the fiscal year 2024-2033 capital improvement program. This is a requirement of state code. Therefore, staff recommends conducting the public hearing to receive citizen comments.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Madam Clerk, have we received anyone who would like to speak? I have one, but this is for a different topic.
She wanted to speak under this item. She changed her mind.
There's one to speak on this item? I don't know that I have it. I have one for the Bent Mountain Library Extension.
That's it.
Okay. For, and it needs to go now?
Yes.
Okay. If you would, please come forward. I've got, if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Helen.
Oh, I need to open, open the public hearing. Thank you, board members, for opening the public hearing. Welcome. If you'd state your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Helen Barrier and I'm a citizen of Bent Mountain and also a co-president of the Bent Mountain Women's Club. And I think the reason that they moved this, to this part of the meeting is because the Bent Mountain Library Extension would be part of your capital improvement. And as you know, our community is small. According to your Roanoke 200 Plan, we have 820 residents. We're growing at 4% and the library is the center of our community. And being a small community, community means everything. Many communities here in Roanoke County have a school. Of course, our school closed in 2010. We were able to open up our library there, which is about 800 square feet. And at the time, at 2000, our Women's Club was very influential in raising funds to get that built and also to put on a small 186 square foot bump out for our children's library. And those plans included a multipurpose room for 560 square feet off to the side. It wasn't funded at that time. So we are here to ask for that funding for that multipurpose room. Our library is small, but it still includes some pretty vibrant programming. We have book clubs there. We have preschool programming. We have children's programming. Of course, people are coming in all the time to check out material, check out videos, use the copier, use the internet, which we are still struggling there. And I know the board is working really hard to get that taken care of and we're very gracious. But the library is utilized and really the heart of the community. So expanding the library would be awesome. We have some diagrams and I'll, I'll submit all this to the clerk when we're finished. Work, even trying to meet as a book club, we're squished in the corner. Children's programming is in between bookshelves. We gather them on the floor. Computers have a very small space for people to come in and use them. So expanding this would really be a huge bonus for our community. And without the library and without a school, it is a real loss to our community. So we very much like for you all to consider this. We've met a couple of times with David and Doug and Jim to go over the idea of this. Met with the community and met with the library staff. And this is something that everyone is very much behind. They have done their due diligence. We have the estimate already worked up and the original plans that can be used for this. So we're really hoping that this can be approved in the budget as you all move forward.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Are there any other citizens signed up to speak?
No, ma'am.
Thank you for setting the record straight for me, Madam Clerk. So at this time, I'll close the public hearing. And we will move on to item D, first reading of ordinances. Ordinance authorizing the acquisition of new variable width easements for a stream restoration project located on Canter Drive and Titan Tail and Trail in the Windsor Hills Magisterial District. Mr. Tarkmane, you're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, member of the board. You have before, before your recommendations to approve the first reading of the ordinance as the Madam Chair presented. The report that, that written in front of you is quite, quite a bit complicated and I'm going to try to, just to speak to you about how we got here and, and we move forward with this project. This particular project or the purpose of this recommendation is, actually has two folds. One is to improve the, the drainage condition in the Canter area for the residents and, and also that impact Hidden Valley High School. And the other fold is to improve and restore the unnamed tributary of Mudley Creek. You recall back in 2018, we had a very heavy storm that created or, or caused a lot of damages in that area. And they still suffer from it today when we have heavy storms. In addition, as you know, in the last 10 years or so, we have applied for the SLEF program. That's a Stormwater Local Assistant Fund to restore our streams in the county. And we have been successful 100% so far. So this particular project and this easement that, in this ordinance, is basically a preparations to apply for another SLEF program or SLEF funding that's coming up here in October. What we've done, the staff has met with the neighbors of the schools, basically along Canter Drive. And that, that was basically based on the recommendations, the, 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 from the neighbor or request from the neighbors. The neighbors asked the, this, the county to improve the drainage area there. And we know that this was part of what we identified back in 2015 would be a good candidate for a stream restoration. So this has been going on since 2022, middle of the year. Staff met with every property owners that signed the, the easement that you have before you. But we also met with the school and everybody agreed that this would be a good project to do. And voluntarily, they signed the, the easement that is front of you. There are six easements in front of you where they all come in as one recommendation. The cost for the project, as you know, when we apply for a SLEF program, it's a 50/50, 50% provided by the county and 50% by the state. If we are successful, as I said, we've been 100% successful in the last 10 years. And we, we hope that this will be as well. The funds for this project is, is part of the CIP that we, you have identified that in the last couple of years. So it's, the recommendation is to approve and accept the easement as presented. I'll be glad to address any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Manier. Any questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Mahoney?
Do you have an estimate of what that might cost? I understand the 50% from SLEF, 50% from our CIP. But do you have a guess or an estimate of what that total cost might be?
It, it would be premature to do that because we have to do some design. What we have in the, in the CIP is basically will cover approximately 50%. I, I think it was $250,000 that we have in the CIP. I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me and I appreciate that questions. And I'll, I'll bring that before you, before the second reading.
Do we, I, I know we have allocated many of our ARPA funds. And so I don't know if we have any ARPA funds still remaining that have not otherwise been allocated. I wonder if we could utilize some of the ARPA funding if we are successful with the, with the application.
May I address that? Richmond?
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Manier? So at this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the first, first reading and schedule the second reading for May 9th, 2023.
Madam Chair, that's in my district. I guess I'll go ahead and make the, the motion to approve the first reading and schedule the second reading for May 9th, 2023.
And is there a second?
Second.
Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And item E, appointments. Does any board member have an appointment that has not yet been given to the clerk? Okay, moving on to item F, consent agenda. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda before approval? If so, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Is there a second? Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Looks as though we are going to have the cleanest cars in the Commonwealth of Virginia.
I know.
Yes.
Mr. North? Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes, and agreeing with the cleanest cars. Item G, citizen comments and communications. This is where I thought Ms. Barrier was going to be coming in, but she's already spoken. Is there anyone else?
No, ma'am.
So, we'll move on. Item H, reports. Is there a motion to receive and file the following reports?
Motion.
Oh, sorry.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll. Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norwood?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Item I, reports and inquiries of Board members. Mr. Radford, you are first tonight.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a couple of items I'd like to share. On April 15, last Saturday, I was able to attend the Bent Mountain Center celebrating their 10th anniversary. I was, attended that along with other Roanoke County staff. They basically took the older school, the school that was closed, and we turned it into the Bent Mountain Center, and the library is attached to it, as Helen spoke about earlier. While we were, while we were there, they also recognized Clay Goodman, who was the administrator at the time that really got the ball rolling to convert that to a community center. So, they recognized him and also Joe McNamara, who was the supervisor at the time. So, they, the president of the Bent Mountain Center talked about and sharing that information. And then while I was there, we had heavy hors d'oeuvres. While I was there, I got to meet Helen, some other people, and we got to talk about the library expansion. One thing that I did bring to Helen and other people up there is that we, you know, we have some, some people on the school board that don't think libraries are needed anymore, and I just want to make sure we heard it from her, that libraries are still useful, they're still a part of our community, and we shouldn't try to replace capital budgets for other capital budgets and put one in front of the other. I think we are beyond that point at this time. We've kind of resolved that. But it's, I appreciate you coming today and talking about that. Second thing I have, if you don't have anything to do on Thursday, we are going to celebrate Arbor Day at Oak Grove Park. Starts at 3:00. We are going to dedicate the new park. It's, it's got some great new additions to it. I told somebody I'm going to ride my e-bike down there with my pickleball racket on my backpack and get things going. But we have a new pickleball court. They renovated the tennis court. We have new bathroom facilities. A new shelter has been installed and a great-looking playground for youngsters from 5 to 12. It's going to be a great day. I hope it doesn't rain. I think there's a little bit of rain in the forecast. I'm going to come anyway.
Maybe under the shelter.
Yeah, 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 exactly. So, again, please join, and then, you know, it's Arbor Day, so we're going to have a tree planting and celebrate that day. So, hope to see citizens there celebrate that with us. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Radford. Mr. Peters?
Thank you. So, along that same line, this Saturday, well, actually Friday and Saturday, will be the Benton Dogwood Festival, something the town has celebrated for, I think, over 16, 65 years. But it starts with a concert on Friday night and then activities throughout the whole day on Saturday. And again, we hope it doesn't rain, but we'll, we'll see. Secondly, you know, I do believe today was a historic day as we have pushed forward with the elementary schools in Mainland CTE Center. I echo the comments of Mr. Altizer, that, you know, money is one thing, but the results and what we're going to get from this long-term, I think, there's no dollar amount we can put on this. I am very excited to see this move forward. And for a fun fact, if anybody cares, eight months from today will be Christmas. So, there you go. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Fun fact. Mr. Norwood?
Follow that up.
He will.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And since the, my two other colleagues didn't use their full time, I'm going to go ahead and borrow some.
There you go. See what you hear, Joe.
I was reading the Wall Street Journal the other day. When I have time, I enjoy perusing through there, and there was an article entitled "Slide in Transport Chairs Seen as Indicator of Slump," which caught my attention, being an old railroader. Economically sensitive stocks like those of transportation and small-cap companies are trailing the broader market, reflecting growing investor concerns about a potential recession. Historically, transportation and small-cap stocks have led to market recoveries, but also sold off faster during economic downturns when demand for goods and materials and travel is slow. One of my former colleagues at Norfolk Southern told me the other night at dinner that the intermodal franchise is beginning to weaken, which carries many of the consumer products. Recession fears have intensified recently in the financial market. Economists surveyed by the Wall Street Journal put the probability of recession in the next 12 months at about 61%, though they expect a shallow and short-lived economic contraction or downturn. Tracking logistics companies like J.B. Hunt, a bellwether for the freight market, and Monday, said Monday that its profit and revenue for the latest quarter declined more than expected in what they called a freight recession. This recession has been one most talked-about recession in my investment career, one commented. And I think companies and portfolio managers are really prepared for it, but that doesn't mean it won't happen. It just means you need to be very selective in terms of stocks that you're choosing. Well, the same thing applies as we look at inflation-driven recession, as I like to call it. It's a 50-50 chance, depending on who you talk to. We heard 61%. Another source says that the inflation rate, which is about 4.5% now, is going to decline to about 3.6% by the end of this year. Ah, inflation-driven and home market prices have impacted 2024 Roanoke County real estate revenues, which are projected at 5.2% in the future year over year, which equates to $6.1 million increase in our budget versus '23. Moreover, inflation-driven and lower auto market supplies impact personal property auto values, which may stay high in 2024, next year, as new auto production levels are beginning to level off and beginning a slight decline because of the fears of recession. This is going to keep used car values elevated by 20%. I was looking last night for a family member at the price of used cars versus new cars, and it's almost, you're better off buying a new car. Really interesting. So, that kind of confirms this. In any instance, we all know Roanoke County is a rural and urban county, unlike some of the counties that surround us that are more rural than they are urban. And we continue to provide many services such as trash pickup, fine schools, fire and public safety services, parks and recreation programs for adults and youth, Explorer Park, that goes without saying almost, just to name a few services. And let's not forget, as Mr. Radford pointed out, libraries for our communities. They are important to our, in fact, they make our communities what they are. All this said, this year alone, this Board has provided record tax rate reductions and a $130 million earmark for three schools' construction funding, which we heard about today. This is a record, and it's a proud accomplishment of both the schools as well as the county Board of Supervisors. The impact of this 3-cent rate budget at 3 cents less or $1.06 per 100, which is a rate decrease, is illustrated simply by this. On a medium-priced home in Roanoke County today, that equates to almost $100 tax savings to the homeowner. That medium-priced home is $299,000. On another example, personal property, the 10-cent rate reduction and the $3 million tax relief coupled with the state's $12.9 million or $15.9 million of relief in addition to the 10-cent rate reduction would yield about $76 savings on the first $20,000 of assessed value for personal property vehicles. Both examples that I just mentioned reduce tax rates and lower costs to citizens. In conclusion, I'm going to ask some rhetorical questions and place this as an earmark for the future. Let's see what our year-end surplus is at the end of June 2023. Should we set aside some money for future potential rainy day funds and/or tax reductions next year? Should we pay for some capital projects with cash rather than borrowing? Or will we see higher real estate revenues above the forecast of $6.1 million in 2024? And if so, will we take some of that money and provide future tax relief for our citizens? Future answers to these questions and more will help us to set our sights on next year's forecasting and budget. I know this Board will be watching this closely as we have demonstrated with this year's record capital school funding and county reduced tax rates. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Norwood. Mr. Mahoney?
Two items. Last week, on April 19, Mr. Blanton, our Roanoke County Library Director, and I were invited to be speakers to the meeting of the LRV Leadership Roanoke Valley Program, and it was at South County Library. And I was able to talk about some of the infrastructure improvements that local governments are involved in, whether it's landfill or reservoirs or dams or what we've done up in front of, on 419 in front of Tanglewood Mall. And then Mr. Blanton was able to talk about, if the Board recalls, when we had the very historic cold snap around Christmas a couple months ago, and we were able to use South County Library as a warming facility for many citizens. And so, it was, it was interesting to have an opportunity to speak to many of the young business leaders in our community who are engaged in the LRV program. The second comment I have is, once you finish with the Arbor Day meeting on Thursday, the 27th, at 4:00, I think you can go to the Holiday Inn, Airport Holiday Inn at Ordway. We're going to have the Airport Master Plan public meeting. And I know that many citizens are concerned about an expansion of the runway at the airport, but that Airport Master Plan also talks about a variety of other necessary improvements at the, at the airport. You're looking at improvements for general cargo, general aviation, the terminal, as well as looking at a possibility of runway expansion. So, this is a public meeting to talk about that Airport Master Plan, and I think that's really important. And I want to go back, and I want to thank Mr. Norwood with his leadership last fall, where the Board recalls we added the airport and the funding for airport improvements to our legislative program. And just got to emphasize how critical the regional airport is to, to our region and to economic development in the Roanoke region. So, if you have nothing better to do, please come out to the Holiday Inn, Airport Holiday Inn. I think it's on Ordway from 4:00 to 6:00, and there'll be a, an opportunity for a public meeting and for citizens to talk to many of the airport people and the consultants they've hired. And you can, as citizens, we can speak to the critical nature of many of those airport improvements. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. I just have a couple of comments that I'm going to make, and the first one is just a reflection on my last couple of weeks. I've had an opportunity to speak to a lot of citizens in my district and knocking doors and meeting them, having short conversations. And I just think it's notable to say that I have not had one citizen say that they would like the county to have less accountability of how taxpayer-funded dollars are spent, nor have I had one citizen say they would like less transparency of how taxpayer dollars are spent. So, this Board is not out of line in our request that the school board have the same protocol as the county government that we follow today. And I just wanted to affirm that, just in the conversations that I've had with citizens today. It's unfortunate that we've had some negative feedback from some, not all, but some of our school board members on that issue. But on a much lighter note, I would just like to say that in the Catawba District, we have an old school building that we also really depend on, in the old Catawba School, and there are several groups that meet there. And what a great facility, what a great building. And I know some staff got to tour it and look through it recently, but they are having an event this Saturday, and it is a flea market from 9:00 a.m. to noon or 1:00, I believe. And it's just another way that we have taken some buildings and really, they are the heart and soul of that community. So, we appreciate that the county has been willing to maintain those buildings and provide that to our communities in the more rural areas. It's a good, a good way to recycle, reuse those schools. So, with that being said, we have a work session, item J, a work session to discuss Bonsec Fire Station with the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Doug Blunt, Assistant County Administrator, Mr. George Assed, Capital Projects Administrators will be leading that. So, we will now recess to the third floor for the work session. Thank you.